This mean to order, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Here.
Depeña?
Here.
Rosiano?
Here.
O'Tary?
Here.
Robel?
Here.
Strommel Burke?
Here.
And Mayor Melham?
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Sunshine?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the 30th of December 22nd, 2022, editions of the Bellevue Times and Star Tribune. The Sunshine Law was completed with the adopted import into the press, posting a file with the Municipal Board, the annual resolution showing the date and place of each regular meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on Council website and also on the board of board.
Perfect. Next on our agenda is number five, work session, council discussions. As most of you know by now, the first meeting of the month is considered a work session slash discussion, where any member of the council or our administration can put a topic on for discussion. This discussion is in and between us, the audience physically present here and those online, basically can listen to the conversation, to the deliberations. If you have something of interest, unfortunately, you're not permitted to speak during this time of the meeting, but you can most certainly do so during public commenting to be coming up later. So without further ado, there's only two topics on. Really, they're, I'm going to hand them off to the manager. So the first one is just an update on our more comprehensive fee ordinance, I guess.
Yes, we, Steve and I actually, Steve and I actually started working directly with the department heads, make sure that we have the most updated information. Some of these fees go back 10, maybe even 20 years that have not even been increased. We found areas where we're actually, where we don't have ordinances in place for fees, and we found out that we have to increase fees. So I think Steve gave us maybe a July 1st deadline?
Yeah, well, I'm going to have to.
Sorry.
Sorry. I'm making a table to send to the department heads. I'm not going to check whether or not, I'm going to have the departments check whether or not the fees are consistent with, you know, the other towns in the areas, in the area, and then we'll update our fees accordingly. There's, there's sections in the code where fees for the same thing are inconsistent with one another. It's not good, so, but we should be able to do it by July 1st. Or at least introduce an ordinance changing the fees by July 1st.
Yeah, we're, everything correct. That might fill the fee time.
We did it last time. Well, then we'll just switch pipes.
Yeah, we're just going to give it a brief minute to reset.
We could use the handheld across the feed. Who's ever going to speak up here?
None of the mics will work.
No, there's, there's some. There's this one.
Are they working now?
Steve, do you work?
Check one, two.
You got to reset it. Did you reset it?
You told me how to.
No, I'm saying reset it. No, it's not recording anything.
I got to stay. You got to give me a little time. It's going to wind up.
You have to go from court to meeting.
I know. I got to get there. Just go ahead. We'll get there.
People can't hear anything. Another week, five minutes, and we said. We had to pass the portable mic around. We have two mics. Right.
Oh, here it is. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Go ahead. Check. You had to give me a minute. Takes, 60-year-old takes a little bit of time.
A little time.
Takes a little bit of time for 60-year-old man.
A little.
Okay, so we had the town, uh, town attorney speaking?
As I said, we hope to have it done by July 1st. I'm doing a table of all the fees. There's a couple hundred of them. I'm going to send it to each department head to update the fees so they can do surveys and determine. Some of the fees, Anthony, are well over 25 years old, have never been changed. There's fees that are a dollar in the, you know, in the ordinances. So we're going to do a survey and try to get, be consistent with other towns in the area, but it'll, there's multiple, multiple ordinances that have to be changed. So hopefully, we'll be able to do it and streamline it so we do them all in a fee ordinance as opposed to amending 100 ordinances. Right now, there was a fee in construction or a fee in police that is buried inside their respective chapters of the ordinances as opposed to one spot, all of these are that we can kind of give a handle on.
Okay, and then next item is again for the manager of summer camp.
Yes, so somewhat exciting news. As much as the plan is not concrete in place, we're getting very close. Steve again has been extremely helpful. The, the goal here is to run a summer camp this year, which would include being housed not in the rec center, which is obviously an outdated building and doesn't have any amenities to either the high school or school number seven. So the first, obviously, the first enhancement is that we would have a gymnasium for really hot days or rainy days. We would have classroom space where we would actually hold arts and crafts, maybe science projects in the classroom. We would have a lunchroom where we can actually sit down lunch. There's a lunch pavilion. And both schools are obviously centrally located next to all of the other opportunities for our children to participate, learn how to play pickleball, tennis courts, introduce the younger students to track that they've never been able to participate in. So we have track, football, the football fields and soccer fields, pickleball, tennis. And again, we'll have a classroom, a lunchroom indoors and then hopefully get to use the patio outdoors. So, and the school could provide the lunch, too. So it's just like a plus, plus, plus. We're running out of time, so we are working very, very close with Dr. Tomco on this. Steve has a shared service agreement.
We should have a shared service agreement for approval by council next meeting, so. Which is the last meeting in May, which will give enough time to.
We just got to just confirm with the school schedule because I don't know how, how many meetings they have left before that. So we have to get, we just have to coordinate that. But that's, that's our goal. So there's also the ability, when we partner with the school, to use a school bus to go on a class trip, a summer day trip, which had never been done in dogwood before. So I know there was some, some questions, maybe some concerns about charging $50 a week. Sounds like a lot. I can assure you that we went probably 10 miles radius. No one is less than $195 a week. If you have two income parents and during the summer when the children aren't in school, to pay the babysitter, that's got to be for the entire day. If you can get somebody for $50, it's very, very inexpensive, but that's still $250 a week. So the $50 shouldn't be, you know, an issue because of the enhancement that we're looking for.
So when might applications be available?
So the application is one of the, because until we know the actual, until we know that we definitely have an agreement with the school, we have to be careful on the application. So we started accepting work applications for counselors, and that, that portion of the program is funded through our Clean Community Grant. So, but as soon as we, for better words, tighten up with school seven, high school, things of that nature. Because again, if we're going to advertise this camp and we are going to be able to say that we're offering A, B, C, D, we want to make sure we have that in place.
So when does camp usually start?
Um, usually first week of July. Depending on when school gets out, sometimes we squeeze a couple of days in in June. Not sure, maybe June 24th. But there may be a couple of days in June. But if it's not a couple of days in June, it's probably Monday, July 3rd.
And is this going to be a municipal, is this still going to remain a municipal summer camp?
Yes, but anytime you partner with the school board, it's a shared service, so in order for them to.
Which responsible?
We are going to hire a camp director.
We being the township is going to hire a camp director?
Correct.
Township is still responsible for the summer camp?
Yes.
I just have a question. Will the schedule change in any way if it gets hosted in the schools? Is it still the same?
The only thing that we, we already started talking about is what they call an extended day. Parents, they just can't get home by 3 o'clock. So if you have, you know, both parents, double income parents working, and they can't get home to pick up their child from camp at 3 o'clock, we will have at least one classroom that would be able to stay for until 6:00 p.m. Again, we've never offered an extended stay, but that's something that all the camps do. So we would like to be able to offer parents the extended hours as well because we know a lot of parents work past 3 o'clock. Just, just the idea of using one of these schools, the ability for a safe drop off, that improves the program by 10 or just by dropping your child off in a very safe environment. Obviously, we know where the rec center is, and in the morning, when there's, you know, 50 kids arriving at the same time and 50 cars, it gets a little hairy.
So traditionally, our rec department runs it.
Correct.
So is our rec department still running it? We're just instead of using the rec house, we're using a building at the high school? We're using school properties?
Combination of all of the above. We will still use support from the recreation department. We will have, in the past, the director did everything, ran camp, did this, and then that's, obviously, one of the concerns was, you know, you can't be at five places at once. So that's why we're going to, we are going to assign a camp director or co-directors. And, you know, so I guess if your question is, is the recreation department going to oversee the program? Yeah, it will oversee the program with the assistance of the, the school.
But like developing the different curriculum, developing different, I, so we're going to, I saw the email. I know somebody that candidate, potential candidates being looked at. Is that person responsible for? Or does the township say, hey, this is what we want you to do? Because this is, you already said it, we're getting close, we're getting late. I, I don't want this to be, you know, a nightmare because it's the first year we're doing it. It's the first time we're partnering up with a different government. And everybody says, oh, well, you know, that happens. The first, I don't want that to happen the first time we're charging for the first time in history. I want to make sure that we have enough time to make sure we can pull this thing off.
I, I agree. And, you know, you know, I don't think, I don't think we have too many options at this point. We have to make it work. And the court director, uh, the court director, the camp director will, prior to the first day of camp, we will have the entire program as far as a work plan in place.
Just have a question. Is this the first time we're hiring a camp director then?
Yes.
So if I may, I mean, this is what I do for a living. I run four camps. So if in any way I can help in terms of, I think, the most important thing is developing the actual position and checklist and the understanding of what the expectations are for that position. So if that were something that, you know, could help, because obviously, exactly as the mayor says, you know, I've seen the posts on social media, a lot of parents have a lot of questions, especially because we're charging. And I think we, although it feels like we're short on time, I do think we can definitely make it work. It absolutely can be made work because we do have already a structure. It's just how do we create this from the top?
We definitely can use all the help that we can get. So, so we welcome any support that you can give us, obviously, with your experience. And as soon as we, you know, kind of inked a deal in writing, we're going to, you know, we're going to be moving closely ahead. I did recommend you, two weeks ago, via email to.
Yeah.
To the manager.
Anthony, I just have a question. The physician for the camp counselor, when is the deadline for that as far as the advertising? Because that person's got to really get started.
Yeah, so again, I was hoping to be in place already. So if it happens tomorrow, if it happens Friday, but clearly by next week, we will have a program in place, camp director, or actually, you know, I always thought that should always be at least two, again, because it's, it's, you know, it's a big program. So we'll probably have a co-director as well. And I would be surprised if we're not totally in place with a written, with a written program by the end of next week. So I'm hoping by the end of this week, we can seal up any of the loose ends.
Subtle question. Just two locations?
No, so no, it's actually one location. And that's the best part of going into a school. So you take, let's just, and again, it's not sketch and storm because I haven't finalized it. Let's just say we were going to go with, I'm saying, first to third. First to third graders would be in one or two classrooms, again, depending on the volume, and then fourth, sixth would be in a different. We really, we, we always have in the past opened it up to eighth, up to eighth graders, although we don't really get so many seventh or eighth graders. They, they want to be on the road.
So, so I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And so camp director, that's, that's, we're going to hire a camp director or co-director, great. Is that shared with the Board of Education? That costs, my assumption is going to be yes.
So that's what we have to finalize with Dr. Tomco and the Board of Education as far as. So, so sometimes in shared services, and certainly Steve correct me if I'm wrong, there's monetary contribution and in-kind contribution. The in-kind contribution would be, they would provide us with classrooms and janitor, things of that nature. Or we just put all the cost in one big, more or less, you know, one budget line item, and we split it 50/50, things of that nature.
So, so my assumption is we, council will have the number for the summer of what it would cost the school, and then that would be a number, and then the director is A, and then we're going to see that offset. That would be, we would know that before my first watch.
Until you actually know the.
Right.
The volume as far as how many children, you don't know for sure exactly what the, but these decisions have to be made before we know that number, no? Everything is in place before we actually have, right? You know, we, we will hold registration, we'll have a registration deadline, but the reality of it is we're always going to, we're never going to turn a child away.
And then my last question is, camp is summer. Have we looked past and say, we hire, what now? After summer's over for summer camp, what is this individual going to do?
No, it's a seasonal employee. It's probably.
Oh, so it's not a full-time employee?
It could be a teacher who's off for the summer. It could be a crossing guard who's off for the summer. It could be.
No benefits, just a?
No, no, no benefits. It's just seasonal, part-time.
Okay, that's.
Just like our regular camp counselors that we already hire. Every year, we hire roughly 20 young men to work in public work. So women, if that's the case, we hire about 40 camp counselors. They're between the ages of 15 and 18.
Okay, thank you.
My, my only fear is we, especially as of late, we like to throw the term around, shared service, and we think because we say shared service or contemplating shared service, something happens miraculously. There hasn't, we've talked about shared service before, and there doesn't seem to be a plan underneath the shared service concept. I just want to make sure that if it's us, we make sure that we, the municipality, have a plan to run this program. It's great the school district has given us access to their facilities or giving us a janitor, but creating a program usually doesn't happen in four weeks.
Again, want to make sure we're ready.
People that we're talking to have worked in previous camps.
So it's not like.
And the program has been running. I mean, maybe not at this capacity, but I do believe that there is certain level of structure already.
There is.
Based on what we had, you know, there's people already worked before. And it's really just about starting, like, you know, just what the transition would be like if it were run at the public school.
And like I shared with everybody in the past, I'm sure shared services, it's a benefit, it should be.
I love it.
It should be, it should be a cost, it should be a cost-savers to both, and it should be streamlined and standards. I think we're going in the right direction with this, I think, this thought, and.
I really do need everybody to mute their phones. You've announced that several times already.
So I just wanted to share that with you, with the shared service program, whichever one we go with.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the manager about either of those two topics? Moving on, report to the manager.
So my, my report tonight is going to be based just about what's going around town over the next 10 days. There's over 22 streets, whether it's the gas line replacement or PSC, PSENG paving some of our streets. I'm not going to list the streets down because it is a complicated list, but I am going to encourage everybody to go on our website. We will put up, and we will daily, if we need to do it on a daily basis, but certainly weekly, provide the list of streets that are going to be worked on, traffic, sort of like a traffic alert. So people in the surrounding area and residents that are driving through Bellevue can at least anticipate some of this work done. We try to, try to get everything done by 3 o'clock, after 3, I'm sorry, after 8, but before 3. Try, doesn't always work that way. But it's sort of like a good news, bad news. All right, you know, bad news is that for the next 10 days and then plus some, because we do have a very aggressive list, there's going to be a lot of, you know, traffic. There's going to be delays. There's going to be traffic patterns that create frustration. But at the same time, hopefully going into September, we'll have, you know, close to, between our streets and PSENG streets, well, of course, a 40 streets repaved, which obviously is a plus, plus. Just got to get worse before it gets better. So we encourage residents to pay attention to our traffic alerts that we will post. And that's probably the best way to prepare for that, for that traffic. The, one other item I just, and again, it's only an introduction, so it's not a public hearing tonight, but introduction of ordinance 1623. I know we sent out a memo to the council, just so you know what that is. And again, this is similar to the fee ordinances. So we have positions, and most of them are part-time, seasonal and level entry positions, that actually pay or actually the salary ordinance reflected less than the minimum wage. The minimum wage in New Jersey is 1413. So any way you see that 1413, that's just based on the fact that prior to introducing this ordinance tonight, that fee was probably either 12 or 1250. But you can't pay, can't pay somebody 12 or 1250 now because the minimum wage is 1430, so we cleaned that out. We also have very, very consistent, and I know it's been a goal of this administration, the last five years, any chance we can to address a position, an opening of position, and we reduce the salary ordinance, there's, that ordinance 1623 reflects a savings of over $40,000 going into the next budget.
And I think that's all we have, certainly available for questions. Any questions for manager? Okay, next on our agenda is report of the mayor. So past events first, this past weekend, we had another busy weekend. We had our community shred day at the senior center. I know I was there. I know the deputy mayor was there. We always do a good job with that. I think I've mentioned it to you already beforehand, and I just sent you another complaint that I got. If we could just, I see Bobby's here, if we could just get some directional signage, you know, we advertised that this is at the senior building. We always think people know where the senior building is. So as of late, we've been putting the, the address out there, 125 Franklin Avenue, and people go to 125 Franklin Avenue and try and get in on Franklin Avenue. They can't get in, they think it's closed, they think it didn't start yet. So if we could maybe just, and it would be really two signs or something that we could put that says, enter on Mill Street, or we don't even advertise it, we just say the senior building on the corner of Franklin and Mill Street, enter on Mill. But I know that the deputy mayor was trying to get in, and I just sent you an email that I got. Some other lady was also having the same difficulty accessing the lot. So it's a good event. People look forward to it every year. We do it twice a year, but there's always a little bit of room for improvement there. Also Saturday, we opened up our community garden. Hats off to our green team, municipal green team. There are currently no plots available, meaning they're all sold out. We're anxiously looking forward to potentially another community garden open up soon. We also had our health screening day. That said, police department's overdoing their thing. Coffee with a cop was an overwhelming success at Starbucks. I think the next one may be here on Washington Avenue at a local coffee shop. And we had our DMV mobile unit, a lot of compliments on that. There is a limited amount of slots for certain tasks, but everybody that had a slot seemed to be very well-served and very happy that we provided that. There is another one coming, I believe, in either June or July. The information's on our website. Upcoming events, next Tuesday, May 16th, the clerk's office will be open late for late-night voter registration. That would be the last day you're able to register prior to the June primary. Essex County Computer Electronics Recycling Day is going to be Saturday, May 20th. I most certainly will be there recycling some computers. And our much anticipated community bike ride, again, hosted by our police department. It's a fantastic event. It's literally one of my favorite events of the spring. This will be our third annual community bike ride. Our police department shuts down a three-plus mile route, and everybody, families, children alike, in bicycle industry, led by a police escort, led by police officers on bikes. And it's a great, great community day. It's always a huge hit. That is going to be Saturday, June 3rd, big head. News, so this, this coming Friday, I will be with the DEP. They are announcing their annual Clean Communities Grants, and I will be on hand at, I believe, Kane University this coming Friday to receive a big, giant, oversized check. Not sure what the amount is yet, not sure how we cash that, but I will have a big, giant check on my hand this coming Friday. As the manager mentioned, summer jobs are available. I'd love to see people commenting on social media, new people that we don't know, that are Bellevue residents, that are trying to get their kids part-time summer work. That's great. We'd love seeing that, and the manager mentioned 20, 20 maybe in DPW, 40 throughout summer camp, so maybe 60 opportunities there for local children. That's great. Now, starting August 1st, don't shoot the messenger, starting August 1st, tax and water department will no longer be accepting cash. It is going to be check, money order, or credit cards online. Also on our website, low-income water assistance program, it's a great program. They will help you pay your water bill. That's just not a Bellevue program. It's actually a statewide program, but a lot of people have been using it, and it works fairly easily. Don't forget that for our seniors, 55 and over, Zumba and Tai Chi is still happening every Tuesday and Thursday at our senior building. Applications, I believe, are still available for our junior police academy. And don't forget that the police department has the Take Me Home program, tracking, helps law enforcement to track our seniors and special needs children. Lastly, but not least, make sure you always check our library because there's always some great events going on. Our library is all posted on their social media and their website. That's it for my mayor's report. We're going to move on now to approval of minutes. I have a regular meeting of April 25th, 2023. Need a motion?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli? Depeña?
Take no part.
Rosiano?
Yes.
O'Tary?
Yes.
Robel?
Take no part.
Take no part.
Strommel Burke?
I've stayed.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next item is communications. A, as part of the NJDEP municipal stormwater renewal process each year, there's a requirement to implement a local education program that focuses on providing the public with information on the impact of stormwater discharges to surfacing groundwater and steps that the public can take to reduce pollutants and stormwater runoff. B, a request received from Lewis Munnies to close a section of Lloyd Place on Monday, May 29th, in celebration of Memorial Day, from 12 noon to 10 p.m. Leave that one to the police department already. And C, a request from the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, DDP, to adopt an ordinance on flood damage prevention. Next item on our agenda is ordinances, ordinances for possible adoption, and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of Townschoe VELVE, Chapter 8-16, entitled Handicap Parking Spaces. Need a motion to open the public commenting?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk Colerall.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel? Strommel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this particular ordinance only. If you have a question about this ordinance, please raise your hand, I'll call on you forward. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Move.
Second. Have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Strommel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 0823 is adopted.
Okay, the next ordinance, an ordinance to amend revised general ordinances of Townschoe VELVE, New Jersey, Chapter 8-16, entitled Handicap Parking Spaces. Need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk Colerall.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strommel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second, clerk Colerall.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strommel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 12-23 is adopted.
Okay, ordinance 13-23, ordinance for possible adoption, and ordinance approving the first amendment to the financial agreement filed in between the Townschoe VELVE and R and R VELVE Urban Renewal LLC. Need a motion to open for public commenting?
Motion.
Have a motion made in second to open for public commenting, clerk Colerall.
Councilmember Cosarelli? Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strommel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Do we have anybody on hold on the line?
No.
Okay, do we have anybody for this ordinance and this ordinance only? Mr. Frank Antoni.
Let me try again, Antoni.
Hold on one second, please. I gave him the 289, is it? 289.
Just give me one second, Mr. Frank Antoni, we're waiting for our professionals to log on.
Just, that's the one with the 0289, right?
I dialed 9734500289, I press 1-0, and then 7285.
Pound.
Pound. Yep.
Just try it one more time, hang up and try that one more time.
Probably need him for this portion.
Yeah, I'll get him.
Dean, are you in? So he's in, I'll be, hold on.
Thank you for calling, please enter your conference, please enter your PIN, follow us. Transferring you to the conference now.
Hey Dean, you can hear us?
Dean, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that, Mr. Frank Antoni, you were first up.
Yeah, on this side, read the ordinance out there, it's a little vague. It says that redoing the financial agreement due to increased cost of construction and increased revenue. What does that mean, revenue to the town?
Well, I'm sorry, what did you, is that your question, is that probably to the town?
Yeah, and are there tax abatements in this agreement?
Okay, Mayor, you tell me when I'm ready to respond, I'm ready.
Okay, sure, so yes, this is a pilot that was previously approved. We're amending the financial agreement, that's part of that pilot. Because of costs, overruns, and increased revenue, for those of you who don't really understand the pilots, it is a revenue share, so the more that they make, the building or the development, the more the municipality makes. So anytime that there's costs that offset incomes and additional revenues, it should be put in paper. So because of increased costs, and therefore also increased revenue, we had to make some amendments to this, and Dean Donatelli, our redevelopment council's on the phone to probably speak to more specifics.
Well, just...
Or you don't want to hear the answer, okay. I was going to let, I was going to let Mr. Donatelli answer your question.
Oh, right.
Dean?
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, can you hear me okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so as the mayor indicated, there is the, a revenue sharing component to really all the financial agreements with towns. It's based, the distinct financial agreement has a projected annual gross revenue. And if the actual gross revenue exceeds that amount of the projected annual gross revenue, then there's a kind of, we call it an upside share for the town. In this, in this case, the redevelopers, due to kind of supply chain issues, as well as COVID, their cost of construction increased significantly. So they came back and made the project less feasible, if at all feasible. So they have, if their projected annual gross revenue could be increased by a percentage equal to what their actual construction costs were increased by, but not to exceed percenters. So if their construction costs go up, they're projecting probably, due to, again, due to supply chain things outside of all of our control, go up, they're projecting 25 or 30%. The projected annual gross revenue, which is the floor, for purposes of calculating the town's share, will go up, so kind of increasing that floor, but not to exceed 20%. And that will all be subject to audit by the town, financial consultant, as well as the CFO. At the end of the day, there is a sharing, a cost sharing component within this redevelopment, I'm sorry, financial agreement, which is being modified just because of the impact of the significant increase in the construction costs.
Thank you, Dean.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, so 20% of their gross revenue, or their net?
It's always based on gross revenue, pilots are based on gross revenue. So if their construction costs increase by, say, let's just say 10%, they're projecting 65 million, and their actual construction costs are 72 or 73 million, which is kind of probably maybe even more, then, then the projected annual gross revenue floor would be increased by a, an equal percentage, not to exceed 20%.
All right, thank you. Just a note to this council, the developer appeared in this room before the planning board, and under oath said he was not going to ask for a pilot. So this is how much we can trust government and developers. So now, the guy who stood here and said he did not want a pilot, and now we've given him a pilot. And the taxpayers are not going to get their full tax, but we, the low homeowners, will pay our full taxes, which can increase regularly, thank you.
Any realtor for this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Just so that we're all on the same page here, this financial agreement with R and R VELVE Urban Renewal pertains to the large project on Washington Avenue, across the street from the Motorcycle Hall, which, if I remember the unit count correctly, the project is going to result in 258 residential units with retail or commercial on the ground floor. And built into the verbiage of that agreement, if one of the, I believe it's the South Tower, if that bottom floor remains empty after the first year of operation, the Board of Education then has entitlement to lease that space. Again, if that space, if that retail space remains unused for the first year. Yes, or no, that's just what this is about?
That's definitely the property that you're talking about, yes.
Okay, thank you. And it's already been acknowledged, there is already in place a 25-year pilot agreement.
Yeah, just so the public is clear, this, this pilot's been long in place. This financial agreement was long voted on, this is just an amendment to it. This is not the first time, this is coming before this governing body, or the audience is getting a chance to see this. This was already voted on, we're just amending it.
I understand that. The 25-year pilot, just to confirm what Mr. Frank Antoni said, I was at the...
I do need you to keep, it's got to be questions, you cannot test them.
Mr. Melham, glad you brought this up, because I have to keep reminding you of the law. And I'll give this to you, so for a long last, you finally have, maybe you can glue this to the wall here. I'm talking about Title 40, colon, 41A, state law. Let me just read to you.
Once again, you're off topic.
Subsection B.
It does say in that law that you have to keep your comments to the ordinance. This has nothing to do with the ordinance. Sheldon, you're out of order, I need you to keep your comments specifically to this ordinance.
To be heard concerning the ordinance, it doesn't say questions.
I don't need to be read a law.
It doesn't say questions, it says, I shall be, every person in this community, in this world, has a right to be heard regarding it, it doesn't say questions only.
They do, I need you to keep your comments to this ordinance.
You need to obey the law, you're very good at breaking it, you need to learn how to obey the law.
Sheldon, you're very close to being out of order, do you have any questions or additional comments?
I will proceed with my, my discussion, which includes questions. The 25-year pilot, Mr. Donatelli mentioned a few moments ago that the reason for this amendment is because of unforeseen increases in supply chain costs, which has increased the, the construction costs. He also mentioned that there's now a contingency here, so that if, if the realized revenue is greater than it was in the original agreement, you'll be getting a proportionate larger share of that through the pilot agreement. But what he didn't mention is what happens if this project doesn't hit its projections? What happens, he threw out the percentage of 20%. What happens if they have a hard time filling this property? What, what happens then to the tax income, to the town, that's a question. I'm ending that with a question mark, Mr. Melham, so I'd like to know, what happens in the...
I don't think it pertains to this particular ordinance, though.
This is, you're my fine...
A what-if, a what-if scenario doesn't pertain to the changes that we're making. Your questions need to be about the changes we're making to this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Right, you're, you're...
You can testify or pontificate about if a hurricane hits, you can do that later during public commenting.
These questions have, pertain exactly to this matter. You, he said a few moments ago that you're tweaking the, the language here so that there's a larger contribution to the town if the, the revenue projections are increased. I'm asking, what happens at the other end of the spectrum if you don't realize these revenue projections? And I'd like to know, is there, on paper, has someone, Mr. Donatelli or others, have you performed a detailed cost analysis? Is there somewhere that I can Oprah in the next 24 hours? A full actuarial accounting of what you actually expect to realize in the form of revenue once this project is completed?
I believe the answer to that would be yes, we have financial experts that actually review all these and go through all the, all the calculations.
All right, well, that Oprah request will be forthright later tonight.
And I believe, Mr. Donatelli, you don't have to go into it, because I don't really think it, it matters, but we do have an upside, we have upside potential, downside protection, correct?
Correct, and, and it's called the minimum annual service charge. So at no point ever during the life of the, of the abatement would the, would the tax be less than what the town is currently, currently being paid.
Thank you.
So there's a minimum annual service charge.
And can you, do you happen to know what that minimum annual service charge is? What is the minimum amount that the township can expect to realize from this project?
I don't, I don't know firsthand, but it would be the land tax and the, it would be the, this current tax on the land, as well as the, any improvements of land. I don't have that number, Mr. Sheldon. But it's very, it would be on the tax record, it's all public record, I mean, it's pretty easily available.
Well, I'll be...
Yeah.
I'll be requesting that information as well, but I'm a little disappointed that, since you're considering such an important, highly bound agreement here, that you don't have all these numbers.
Again, Mr. Sheldon, you were in this room when we originally adopted this, and you could have asked those questions, this is just a change to an existing, it's not the first time the public is hearing this, it's not the first time that this particular financial agreement is before this governing body, we've already passed it before, you were here at that meeting.
You are all, you have, you're highly paid experts, I'm not, I'm, I'm just a volunteer civilian. I would expect more information to be coming from all of the development attorneys, et cetera, that they would have this number, especially since you're voting on this tonight, that this would be, all this information would be in front of each member of the council.
One thing we're voting on is the modification, which is the change.
Yeah, well, you should know exactly what that change entails, what down to the dollar, what you're expecting to, to realize, what these changes. The last thing I want to ask you before I return to my seat, the pilot agreement. If you can just clarify this, the pilot agreement, which is 25 years, that starts the moment the project has been completed and a CFO is issued. So the, the pilot is actually, just right now in furore on me, the pilot, if I understand the law correctly, pilots don't begin until the moment the co-construction officer says, here you go, you've got your CFO, good luck to you, start renting.
That's it.
That's correct, all right, thank you, that's all I want, thank you.
Anybody else to this ordinance and this ordinance only? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to move for final adoption.
So move.
Second. Have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption, clerk Colerall.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strommel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 1323 is adopted.
Okay, next item on our agenda is ordinance 16-23. It is an ordinance for introduction, an ordinance to amend the salary ordinance creating personnel positions and adopting classification compensation plan. Need a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion made in second to introduce, clerk Colerall.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strommel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. We are introduced. Next item on our agenda is public commenting, need a motion to open public commenting?
Remove.
Have a motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk Colerall.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strommel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, we're open for public commenting, that's the point, you could talk about almost anything you want. We ask that you try to keep it a township business, but you have five minutes. Just raise your hand, I'll call on you when you come up, just state your name and address for the record. Matt?
I hope I can reach that microphone. No, I have teacher voice.
Just squeeze it, you can just squeeze it.
I have teacher voice. Just to, because it's short, if you, if you, if you see pictures, it's going to accent better for me, for you, on January 7th, I'm going to start to... Oh, I'm so sorry, no, Artieta, L-I-B-N-A, thank you. A-R-T-I-E-T-A, 93 Union Avenue. My nightmare started January 7th around 10 o'clock in the morning, and, and my, the VELVE sewer back up into my basement was around 10, 10, 10 a.m. I called DPW, that was Saturday, since God, I was home. And of course, it was Saturday, it was closed, so they told me, call, call the police department. And when this has happened, they, they said, I was waiting two hours, cleaning all these sewer, all the pictures you can see.
I do want to show you the right story, so you did call the police department?
I called, I called, I called the police department.
What did they tell you?
They told me they were to that situation, and they's going to send a truck. So after two, two hours, nothing happened, no truck, no nothing. I went out, because I'm still cleaning and trying to catch up all of these things. Instead, I called private plumbing company, when they came, was like impossible. They, they was impossible to open or clean it, so they told me, I have all the evidence, they, they told me that is a silly problem. So when I went outside, I saw a worker from the DPW, and I said, what happened? Where is not coming, where the truck is here? So he said, our truck is down, and we waiting for the Bluefield truck to come. They going to help us. But he was so desperate, he saw, he seemed so desperate, that he, he tried to, I have a, a main hall in front of my house, and he went, as soon he opened, I flopped again, because it was impossible for him, for him to help me in that way. So when I came, I came, well, I, 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 I called, after all this happened, as soon Bluefield truck came, the water was down. As soon they put a power jet, they called. As soon they put a power jet, they call, and the water was done. That was like a 4:00 in the afternoon, if I don't make mistake. I was stepping on this, this is, and so I called the company Northwest Power Drive so they can clean my basement because I start to say, okay, this is going to be mold. It's going to be wet, it's going to be, so I'm using my basement. So I called and I was with the company power drive until 12:00. They came, they checked, they did everything. So they start to cleaning, they start to dehumidify it. And okay, they cut my basement two feet up to be, that's it. They say that's it, the way they have to finish the job. So I came to here, to the building. So they said, "I want to put a claim. What happened?" So they say, "You have to go through Qual Linux, the company, your insurance company." This has happened since that moment, since the Saturday, since that week, following week. So they didn't answer, they didn't answer, they didn't answer, until finally they answered me. And they say, "You have to go through your insurance." I went through my insurance, but they say, "What? The difference is your insurance don't pay, we're going to pay." Keep all the receipt. I did, I have all the proof and everything. So finally, April 10, I received, I went through my insurance. My insurance covered part of my, that sewer, through my house insurance, that sewer part, they cover. But they didn't cover all. So I received a letter from your insurance company, that Belvedere Insurance Company. They denied my claim. They say that, here, that it's just, I'm going to, just, I have the letter and everything. The city is immune from any liability under title. They put 59 something. I really, I don't know about code. Tell me about kids. I know all that, but I don't know about, we need to put a legal code. So, but I think Belvede City didn't clean. I assumed that truck was down, that truck was down. And that's the reason, my basement right now is a mess still until today. So what I'm here is because I would like to somebody recheck my case, look my case again, and to see if I can get some.
So, sorry you had to go through that. This probably isn't the best venue, but you're here now. So you have the right people here. We have the town manager here. This is the town manager. We have our DPW director here.
Thank you.
I saw him taking some notes. What I would do, have you contacted the manager's office directly yet?
No.
If not, I'm going to have you do that probably tomorrow, man.
Thank you.
You'll have at least one main point of contact. He's the CEO of the township. He runs the township. He's the guy that can get you answers with your insurance company and maybe get DPW back there to check.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I don't know if I can give that picture, so I'm... So when I can read it, I can read it to you when... Yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting?
And this was my first time, I was so nervous.
Did great. Anybody else in public commenting?
Hi, Carmella Fleischmeyer, 3 Main Street. First of all, it's nice to see everybody up and on the dais and feeling good. Hopefully, everyone's healthy, content, happy, and happy. On the consent agenda, I saw there were ordinances to, for planners.
Resolutions.
Resolutions. Okay. Do we have three planners for this lovely little town?
No, they're all the same name. You see, CME associates?
Right.
Just different types. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, this might be just to qualify them to be able to do work or these are specific.
They're not going to qualify, this is awarding the contract.
Or awarding the contracts, okay.
Okay.
They were previously appointed after RFQs were given. They were just previously appointed as a planner. Now, these are individual, appointing them in contracts for individual roles, like redevelopment, which the town doesn't pay for, the redevelopment is paid for. So they're all individual roles within the, because there has to be contracts in order for them to get paid by the township. So these are individual roles, one of which is the housing and redevelopment program. They monitor for people who come in and do repairs on their house. They monitor that. Those fees come out of that account. These aren't being paid, just so everyone knows. These aren't all coming out of township budgetary amounts.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Secondly, and again, I apologize, your name. Okay, so you are our CFO, correct?
That's right.
Okay. May I make a suggestion?
Carmella, I do need you to address us.
Sure. May I make a suggestion through whoever?
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Okay. If our fabulous CFO is going to attend the meetings and interact with public, can you please sit on the other side? Oh, we can make work.
If we had room, our assistant town manager slash police chief would be here. Our DPW director would be here. Our fire department representative here. They all could answer questions during the meeting.
Come on, boys, we can move the table. Come on, we can get a table. Come on, we can get a couple of chairs. Because again, I did not know who this man was.
If you recall, Colak, there were actual complaints about me being here, if you recall, early on. There were certain people in this room that complained about me sitting here.
Sunshine, it's a big room. We can make it work. Come on, we're party players, people. Because again, the last meeting, again, I apologize, I did not know who you were. So the conversation that we had got a little sketchy. So apologies. So in the future, if people are going to be sitting here and, you know, addressing, I would like them to be properly introduced, if that could be done, okay? And finally, I want to thank whoever made the arrangement to have the DMV here. It was great for me. I ended up forgetting my papers. They let me come back, you know, so, but thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I did say that.
Anybody else, anybody else in public commenting? Mr. Frank Anton.
I'm glad you got the microphone working, but I think my sophomore in high school English teacher taught us a public speaking. Look at the last row in the audience and speak to them. If you can make them heard, everybody else will. So it's a little advice, hope you take it. In regard to the report the town manager made on the summer rec program at all. It's not only summer rec program, it's for you, the friendly house we've done. I get people calling from, "Why isn't the friendly house being used?"
It is being used.
For what?
It's being used a lot more than you know. If you're saying that it's not being used, then you're receiving misinformation. We had practice to have maybe up to about two or three weeks ago. And one season has come to an end. But yes, maybe in the months of May, June, July, obviously, a little lighter. But I can assure you, come September to April, it's used three times a week.
Why don't I just ask all your questions, Mr. Frank? I want to eat away at your time.
Sorry, I have some answers.
Don't worry about my time. The, well, maybe we can use that for some of the summer programs. With the people on that side of town, they won't have to travel. We won't have to do busing and all. They're right there, they live in that area. And then this council is destroying our township with this overdevelopment. The latest abortion is this Union Avenue project by...
Excuse me, Mario, is that your phone? I repeatedly ask people to acquire their phones. If you're going to use that, you just step out. I mean, I hear it up here, so you have to be able to hear it. Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, you got a, before the zoning board is a development on Union Avenue by Campbell Avenue. Now, you created a BA zone over there for commercial and high-rise and all, which don't belong in that part of town. But then you got a developer who's not satisfied with developing on Union Avenue. He wants to go into RA1, top residential area on Campbell Avenue. So you amend the ordinance to go down one property on Campbell Avenue, which infringes on the people who are paying RA1, the top tax rate in the township. So it appears that the campaign contributions pay off. This is, it's embarrassing. And some of your zoning board members were very uncomfortable with this. They couldn't even sum up. One person, one member made a move to hear it, nobody would second it. That's how bad this application is.
I think there was also a motion to deny it that wasn't seconded either. If you want to tell the whole story, you should tell the whole story, Mr. Frank.
Okay, so fine. So I'm glad you said that. So it's a complicated and a bad plan. But what I'm talking about, we keep infringing on our residential areas. We are becoming an inner city because of your overt development. It has to stop. You know, and believe me, the absorption rate on new apartments has been dropping for the last nine, 10 months. We're going to be stuck with all these apartments and then they're going to be reduced. And you know what's going to happen, what they're going to become, like it all inner cities. Like, we're going to be like New York again. So stop this overdevelopment and stop this kind of spot zoning, which is exactly what that is. To go down into the RA1 for one specific property for a developer is the definition of spot zoning.
Thank you.
So wake up, you're killing this township.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting?
Good evening. Is it better?
Squeeze the button. Yeah, that one, squeeze that.
There we go. All right, good evening. I just wanted to give kudos, oh, Frank LaLis, Bellville. I just wanted to give kudos to the Green Team and to the Better Bellville Civic Association for the amazing green arbor that was placed on Division Ave. Time and time again, we hear about recreation, the need to better recreation in our township, open space, green space, and the importance of them. And I think this is a really great addition to our community. And I think we need to continue to push for initiatives like this. So I just wanted to give kudos to that. And thank you, everybody, for the hard work. Have a great night.
Mr. Will, what's your ideas?
Send me to comment.
Anybody else in public commenting?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. I was waiting throughout this evening to have confirmation that the public hearing for this year's municipal budget will be taking place next meeting, May 23. Last council meeting, that was sad, but I haven't heard anything tonight. Are you still planning to have the public hearing on the budget?
Yes.
On the 23rd, or thank you. At the last council meeting, I had asked when Little Street, which has undergone massive renovation, new water lines, gas lines, everything, would be paved. I'm happy to announce that it was paved yesterday. So I don't know if it was the town itself or PZNG, but finally, that major roadway has been repaved. I want to piggyback on what Mr. Frank Antoni was discussing a few moments ago regarding last Thursday's zoning board meeting. There was a lot of anger, there were angry words mentioned towards the end of the evening about a spot zoning matter involving 21 Campbell Avenue. 21 Campbell had been historically in the RA1 zone, single-family residential, as far as long as you go back for the zoning maps, 30-plus years. It was always in the RA1 zone. But something very interesting happened in the summer of 2019 when all of the sweeping zoning changes were passed. When you, Mr. Melham, announced that from this point on, you usurped planning board appointment, class four planning board appointment authority from the rest of the council, which was addressed by Mr. Cates last year. And you finally, you know, realized your wrongs and have now, once again, made it a shared council responsibility. But in the summer of 2019, when you were extending the BA zone along most of Union Avenue...
Just briefly, when you say when you were, this governing body voted to change the zoning...
Well, shared responsibility, thank you. When the BA zone was expanded from Bellville Avenue all the way to Greylock in a sub-rosa way, an under-the-radar way, 21 Campbell was moved out of the RA1 zone into the BA zone. And there were lots of rumors about what was going on there, what was probably going to happen for that entire block between Greylock, Union, and Campbell. So at one last, the developer appeared last Thursday and both Mr. Frank Antoni and I were basically told, you can't talk about the spot zoning situation. It's not the place for the zoning board. It's the governing body that has the responsibility to deal with zoning matters, especially spot zoning. But if you look at the ownership of 21 Campbell, yes, the property is owned by Right Angle Realty, which are the same people who own the property, which is the Whiskey Priest. They own, have property interest in several other locations. One of the partners in the, in Right Angle Realty sold, they had purchased the King's Window Store on Washington Avenue and as part of the shared services agreement last year, the $11.9 million bond ordinance with the Board of Ed. He sold the King's Window Store to the Board of Ed for $775,000 after he purchased it in February of 2019 for $420,000, making himself a tidy little profit of $355,000 and flipping the property three years later. But even more interestingly, 21 Campbell, yes, it's owned by Right Angle Realty, but guess who, there's other entities that use that address. In particular, one of, two LLCs that are operating out of 21 Campbell happen to be the people that now own your former building next to the town hall. The same people who bought that building from you in January of this year for $1.36 million. So explain to me how this isn't overt quid pro quo, spot zoning. You made sure that those interests would have 21 Campbell moved out of the RA1 zone into the BA zone. And you did that when you were apparently on very good terms. The rumor is that you've had somewhat of a falling out with elements of those LLCs. But this is egregious, this is egregious spot zoning. This is illegal and it's not going to be allowed to pass without challenge. So be prepared for the next group of lawyers to deal with you, Mr. Antoni. That's it for tonight. I have lots of other things, but only five minutes, so I have to...
Anybody else in public commenting? No? entertain a motion to close public commenting?
Motion.
A motion made and second to close public commenting. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robel?
Steve was not feeling so good.
Okay, Stromberk, Suena? Stromberk? And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, consent agenda, I'm going to pull C off. Okay, I'm just going to pull off C, so I'm entertaining my...
Do we have three planners for this lovely little town?
No, they're all the same name. You see, CME associates?
Right.
Just different types, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, this might be just to qualify them to be able to do work, or are these specific?
They weren't qualified, this is the awarding of contracts.
Or awarding them contracts, okay.
Okay.
They were previously appointed after RFQs were given, they were just previously appointed as a planner. Now, these are individual, appointing them in contracts for individual roles, like redevelopment, which the town doesn't pay for, the redevelopers pay for.
Okay.
So they're all individual roles within the, because there has to be contracts in order for them to get paid by the township. So these are individual roles, one of which is the housing and redevelopment program they monitor for people who will come in and do repairs on their house, they monitor that, those fees come out of that account. These aren't being paid, just so everyone knows, these aren't all coming out of township budgetary amounts.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Secondly, and again, I apologize, your name. Okay, so you are CFO, correct?
That's right.
Okay. May I make a suggestion?
I do, Carmella, I do need to address us.
Sure. May I make a suggestion through whoever?
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Okay. If our fabulous CFO is going to attend the meetings and interact with public, can you please sit on the other side? Oh, we can make work.
If we had room, our assistant town manager slash police chief would be here, our DPW director would be here, our fire department would represent here, they all could answer questions during the meeting.
Come on, boys, we can move the table, come on, we can get a table here, come on, we can get a couple of chairs. Because again, I did not know who this man was.
If you recall, Collier, there were actual complaints about me being here, if you recall, early on. There were certain people in this room that complained about me sitting here, so.
sunshine, it's a big room, we can make it work, come on, we're party players, people. Because again, the last meeting, again, I apologize, I did not know who you were, so the conversation that we had got a little sketchy, so apologies. So in the future, if people are going to be sitting here and, you know, addressing, I would like them to be properly introduced, if that could be done, okay? And finally, I want to thank whoever made the arrangement to have the DMV here, it was great for me. I ended up forgetting my papers, they let me come back, you know, so, but thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
I did say that.
Anybody else, anybody else to public comment? Just the Frank Antoni.
I'm glad you got the microphone working, but I think my sophomore in high school English teacher taught us a public speaking, look at the last row in the audience and speak to them. If you can make them heard, everybody else will. So it's a little advice, hope you take it. In regard to the report the town manager made on the summer rec program and all, it's not only summer rec program, it's for you to friendly house we've done. I get people calling from, so why isn't a friendly house being used?
It is being used.
For what?
It's being used a lot more than you know it cannot. If you're saying that it's not being used, then you're receiving misinformation. We had practiced there maybe up to about two or three weeks ago, and one season has come to an end, but yes, maybe in the months of May, June, July, obviously, a little lighter, but I can assure you, come September to April, it's used three times a week.
Why don't I just ask all your questions, Mr. Frank, I want to eat away at your time.
Sorry about my time.
Don't worry about my time. Well, maybe we can use that for some of the summer programs, with the people on that side of town, they won't have to travel, we don't have to do busing and all, they're right there, they live in that area. And then this council is destroying our township with this overdevelopment. The latest abortion is this Union Avenue project by.
Excuse me, Mary, is that your phone? I repeatedly ask people to acquire their phones. If you're going to use that, you just step out. I mean, I hear it up here, so you have to be able to hear it. Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, you got to, before the zoning board, is a development on Union Avenue by Campbell Avenue. Now, you created a BA zone over there, for commercial and high-rise and all, which don't belong in that part of town. But then you got a developer who's not satisfied with developing on Union Avenue, he wants go into RA1, top residential area on Campbell Avenue, so you amend the ordinance to go down one property on Campbell Avenue, which infringes on the people who are paying RA1, the top